Good evening. I'd like to call the meeting of the Public Utilities Commission to order. First order of business will be pledge allegiance. If you would all stand, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tonight's meeting is a public hearing, and on behalf of the Board of Public Utilities Commissioners of the Town of Wallingford and the Water Pollution Control Authority of the Town of Wallingford, I hereby convene the public hearing for the adoption of water and sewer charges to be effective for water and sewer invoices rendered on or after October 1st, 2020. The proposed charges that are in the subject of this public hearing are available to the public and may be obtained from our General Manager of the Water and Sewer Divisions, Neil Anwick. Is there a motion and a second to read the title and the introductory paragraph of the following proposed charges to their, to me in their entirety, and to waive the reading of the remainder of the proposed charges incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye stands voting unanimously. Okay, the notice of the public hearing is as follows. Public hearing on proposed revisions to the water and sewer charges, Wallingford, Connecticut. Amendment of Water Division terms and conditions, water quarterly consumption charges, non-meter charges customers, that is, water service installation charges, water meter installation fees, water miscellaneous charges, sewer service policy, sewer quarterly usage charges and exceptions, sewer miscellaneous charges, and water and sewer payment terms and conditions. Pursuant to chapters 102 and 103 of the Connecticut General Statutes as amended, and chapter 14 of the Charter of the Town of Wallingford, notice is hereby given that the Board of Public Utilities Commissioners of the Town of Wallingford, acting for itself and as the Water Pollution Control Authority of said town, will hold a public hearing in the Parisi Council Chambers at the Wallingford Town Hall, 45 South Main Street, Wallingford, Connecticut, on Thursday, July 16th, 2020, at 6:30 PM. For the purpose of revising Water Division charges, terms, and conditions, water quarterly consumption charges, non-metered charge customers, water service installation charges, water meter installation fees, Water Division miscellaneous charges, Sewer Division service policy, sewer quarterly usage charges and exceptions, Sewer Division miscellaneous charges, and water and sewer payment terms and conditions as shown below. Such revisions shall be effective for all water and sewer invoices rendered on and after October 1st of 2020. If there are unforeseen circumstances where the public hearing location will be, will change to a remote virtual meeting, then at least 24 hours ahead of the public hearing, a notice will be posted on the town's website and in the town clerk's office, providing specific instructions on how to access and participate in the public hearing. Materials for this meeting will also be posted on the town's website for viewing prior to the public hearing. The presentation is given by the Water and Sewer Division General Manager and put in support from the Water and Sewer Division Business Manager. First things first, I would like to have, Neil, I will turn it over to you for your presentation, sir.
Thank you. Good evening. So we will go through the agenda, so we'll have, excuse me, brief introductions, we will go through our Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades projects objectives, we will review the influent flow and loading statistics, review the phosphorus effluent quantities, review our current treatment processes and flow schematic. We will delve into the different portions of the Phase 1 of the Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades project. We will talk about select projects for Phase 2 of the Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades project, specifically those that will occur within the next five years and will impact the rates. We will review the upgrades, the clean water fund budget. Then we will get into the rate cost of study approach, look at the historical Water Division billable consumption and the Sewer Division billable usage, review the historical Sewer Division rates, talk about the number of sewer customers by meter size and class, review the current division, current commitments for our budget, then talk about the recommended Sewer Division rate model, including the basic service fee or the BSF and the proposed Sewer Division usage rate. We will look at the projected quarterly increase by meter size and class, and then talk about a few of the recommended changes to Water Division miscellaneous charges as well as Sewer Division miscellaneous charges. We will review the next steps in the rate adoption process, and then open it up for any discussion and questions. So in as introductions, as the Public Utilities Commission is Robert Beaumont, Chairman, Patrick Barney, Vice Chair, and Joel Ryan Bold, Secretary. I am Neil Anwick, General Manager for the Water and Sewer Divisions. With me tonight is William Thalion. He is the Business Manager for the Water and Sewer Divisions along with Rick Hendershot, the Director of Public Utilities. The objectives of the Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades project, we have a 20-year planning horizon, so it is to ensure that the sewage disposal and growth needs of the town are met for the present as well as the next 20 years through 2041. And we need to meet the tertiary phosphorus effluent limit effective April 1, 2022, and this is a flow-based limit of 8.9 pounds per day. And the phosphorus limit is mandated by our NPDES discharge permit. The wastewater treatment plant has not had any substantial upgrades since it was completed, since substantial completion was achieved on July 1, 1989. The plant has been in continuous operation for 31 years and counting. It's 31, 31 years, 24/7. Most, if not many, many if not most of the existing systems and equipment are near the end of their useful life. The proposed project, the ongoing project, will correct some of the flooding issues we have, particularly at our UV disinfection and our post-oration tank, and will incorporate controls that will improve operations and energy efficiency. So influent flow statistics, when you use your shower, you use your sink, you flush your toilet, where does it go? Our average annual flow is 5.1 million gallons per day. We are permitted for 8 million gallons per day, but what we look at and what we design around is the maximum day flow. That is currently 19.1 million gallons per day when we have a precipitation event and have inflow and infiltration into the wastewater collection system. If we project forward for 20 years until 19, excuse me, until 2041, we look at town growth as well as density within our sewer service area, our average annual flow will increase a bit to 5.5 million gallons. Our permitted design flow will stay at 8.0 million gallons per day, and our maximum design flow will increase to 19.56 million gallons per day. So for the upgrade projects, that is our design statistic. Wastewater has various components to it. The top four are our biological oxygen demand, BOD, our total suspended solids, total nitrogen, and total phosphorus. We highlight the current phosphorus. We receive approximately 206 pounds per day of phosphorus to the wastewater treatment plant. In the future, 2041, we project to receive 251 pounds per day. So that is phosphorus coming in. Our new permit limit of April 1, 2022 will be 8.95 pounds per day. So we have to reduce from 206 to 8.95. Speaking of phosphorus, let's review the current NPDES phosphorus effluent limits. Currently, it is 0.70 milligrams per liter. We cannot, and that is for any two consecutive months, so we average them over two months, and it is neutral of flow. So regardless of whether we receive 5.1 million gallons per day at the wastewater treatment plant, our average flow, or up to 19.1, which is our maximum day during our precipitation event, our current phosphorus limit cannot exceed 0.70. Beginning April 1, 2022, it will be a flow-based limit, 8.95 pounds per day. So if you do the math, do your proper conversions, at 5.5 million gallons per day, required phosphorus limit will be 0.19. At our permitted design level of 8.0 million gallons per day, the required effluent phosphorus limit will be 0.13. Here is a graph of our phosphorus effluent concentrations from calendar year 2017 through June of 2020. The phosphorus season is April 1 through October 31st, so that is why you only see April through October. So we have converted this to pounds per day, and then if you look closely, the dashed purple line is our future limit of 8.95 pounds per day. So we currently cannot and do not meet the future limit with our current treatment processes. Here is an aerial view of our current wastewater treatment plant. We have a pre-treatment, then we go to primary settling, and I'm jumping around a little bit. I'm going in the actual flow of our wastewater. So we go through the headworks, the pre-treatment building, into our primary settling, then to our intermediate pump station where we cross the wastewater treatment plant to around 12 noon on the picture, to our anoxic tanks. That helps with denitrification. It then flows to the right to our rotating biological contactors. Then it goes towards 6 o'clock, towards our secondary settling tank, and then towards in the center to our UV disinfection and post-oration tanks. And then it goes towards the word treatment in the tile, in the title, out towards the Quinnipiac River. We also do have an administration building, which houses our state-certified water and wastewater laboratory as well as our solids complex. So wastewater is 98% liquid, 2% solids, but how you manage your solids is one of the most important aspects of wastewater treatment. I will not go through that in detail, but if we did include the flow diagram of the proposed wastewater treatment process, and I will point out what we are adding is Tank 4B, which is our anaerobic tank. We are adding a secondary pump station, which is number 9. We are adding number 10, which is our tertiary phosphorus process, and 11 and 12, which is our reconfigured and rebuilt UV disinfection and post-oration tanks. Just to give you an idea of how much of the plant will be impacted, each of the red circles as well as the green circle is impacted by our Phase 1 projects. It's a little tough to read, I apologize. So let's delve into a few of the highlights of what we were adding for our wastewater treatment plant upgrade projects, and this is really the, this answers the question is, what are the rate payers buying? So we are adding an anaerobic basin, so it is to improve on our existing efforts to cultivate a consistent biological phosphorus process, or BIO for short. It's a coarse uptake of phosphorus, and it will also help our current carbon limiting situation. And by adding the anaerobic basin, particularly during the phosphorus season from April 1 to October 31st, it provides operational flexibility, and our goal is to reduce our chemical dependence. One of the big drivers behind our tertiary phosphorus treatment process is to prepare the wastewater as best we can prior to reaching the tertiary phosphorus process. It's a bit like a recipe. You start with better ingredients. You're going to get a better product at the end. We will be relocating the intermediate pump station. The current location of the intermediate pump station is the exact location where our two new secondary settling tanks will be constructed. Here is a plan and profile view of the anaerobic basin. So it has a circular path, and then on the profile view on the bottom, you can see three of the Invent mixers. Those are special mixers that circulate the wastewater within the anaerobic basin to enhance the biological processes that take place there. And just for some graphics, here are some pictures of the Invent mixers. The Wallingford plant will have six of them. And here are some construction photographs. Most of the, most of the pictures included here tonight were taken within the last month. So the one on the left is looking due west towards the Quinnipiac River. The white you can see in the background is the rotating biological contactors. And then that was before the safety railings were installed. And on the right is a little different perspective. The safety railings have now been installed, and what you see is plastic sheeting over the railings to protect them from damage by the contractor. If they break it right now, they buy it again. And so what we've built into the Wallingford wastewater treatment plant is some operational flexibility. So that is a 36-inch raw water pipe. To the left, in the left picture, is the anaerobic basin. To the right is the existing primary settling tanks. So depending on the time of the year, the quantity of influent wastewater as well as our biological processes, we can either direct the wastewater treatment, the raw wastewater through the primary settling tanks alone, through the anaerobic basin alone, or first through the primary settling tanks and then through the anaerobic basin. So this will provide us flexibility as far as meeting our treatment processes and goals. Picture on the left is the intermediate pump station that is in the way of the two new secondary settling tanks. And the picture on the right is the under-construction intermediate pump station, and it is built on the downstream side of the anaerobic basin. They share a common wall, so this helped with constructability as well as some cost savings. You can see this is looking down into the intermediate pump station. There are seven different slide gates within the intermediate pump station, and this allows us to direct the wastewater various places, including through the primary, over to the anoxic tank, or through the anaerobic basin. So additional secondary settling tanks. We currently have four secondary settling tanks, and with only four tanks, we do not meet operational standards. The two new tanks will be identical to the existing tanks, and quite frankly, we need additional settling surface area to reduce the suspended solids loading prior to the tertiary phosphorus treatment process. So again, we are trying to prepare our wastewater the best we can before we go to the tertiary phosphorus process. And then all six tanks, the four existing as well as the two new, will have effluent launders, effluent to reduce algae. So the picture on the left is again looking west towards the Quinnipiac River and the rotating biological contactors. You can see the four tanks, and then on the picture on the right is a drone photograph of the wastewater treatment plant, and you can see the grass area prior to construction starting. So we have always planned to have two additional tanks. So when they constructed the wastewater treatment plant between 1987 and 1989, we built in future expansion. And everyone might ask, what is the effluent launders? So the effluent launders go over the end of the secondary settling tanks, and they basically block the settled or cleaner wastewater from sunlight where you can have algae grow. So the picture on the left is our existing secondary settling tanks with V-notched effluent weirs, and then you can see they're basically fiberglass covers that cover that cleaner water. Sunshine produces algae. We send algae to our tertiary phosphorus treatment process. We need more chemicals, more polymer, and more sand. And then the process takes longer and is more difficult, so we pre-treated upstream. Secondary pump station, so it is necessary to raise the hydraulic grade line to the tertiary phosphorus treatment process. The wastewater treatment plant site is very flat, so we cannot always rely on gravity, and it includes screening again to prevent algae from entering the tertiary phosphorus treatment process. One of the aspects we built in during the design of our upgrades project is the secondary pump station and the tertiary phosphorus treatment system as well as the new UV and post-oration buildings can be bypassed during the non-phosphorus season, the off-season, which is November 1 to March 31st. Therefore, we do not have the pumping costs. And here is a schematic of the lower level of the secondary pump station. To the left of the photo, we have five different pumps. They are of various sizes. So our average flow is 5.1 million gallons per day, but between 2 AM and 7 AM, our flow drops down to 0.9 million gallons per day. And during a rainstorm, it can peak up to 19.1. We've even seen levels up to 22. So we need a combination of pumps that will work 24 hours a day. We just can't design around 5.1. So we have some small pumps, some medium pumps, and some larger pumps to handle that flow variation. And we get to our tertiary treatment building, our TPB. So we selected a ballasted flocculation process based on cost and effectiveness, and this was during the facility plan portion of the design. And we piloted three different phosphorus treatment technologies head-to-head, side-by-side. We selected a ballasted flocculation. So if we look at the diagram moving left to right, we add microsand, a polymer, and a coagulant. It gets rapid mixed in the injection tank. Maturation is just a fancy word for slow mixing, so we want to basically create flocks or clumps that the phosphorus will stick to, and then we have our settling tank. So at the bottom of the settling tank, we recycle our sand and our polymer to a cyclone. So we do reuse that, and then the clarified water goes over a outlet weir at the top of the tank. In the TPB tertiary phosphorus building, this is a schematic, a drawing of the lower-level design. It is a two-story building. So you can see moving right to left is how the flow would work. So we have our injection tank or our rapid mix tank, our maturation or our slow tank in the middle, which is where the heads of the red arrows are. And then the third tank in the center of the picture is our clarifier tank. Here are some construction photographs of the tertiary phosphorus building. We are looking in the left picture. We are looking north. So for reference, the Quinnipiac River is on the left, and on the right picture, we are looking south. Following the tertiary phosphorus treatment process, we are adding a new ultraviolet disinfection as well as post-oration basins. The current UV disinfection as well as the post-oration flood when the Quinnipiac River floods. And quite frankly, the parts in the UV are circa 1989. They are obsolete, and we have actually had to resort to eBay at times to finding replacement parts. So the UV system is, treatment system, is April 1 to October 31st. We actually have to start turning on our UV disinfection system March 1. It takes us a full four weeks just to get it up and running right now. And after the ultraviolet disinfection will be our post-oration basin. This is a permit requirement. You need to add air vis a vis oxygen back into your wastewater before it goes into the receiving stream. Currently, these are backwards. So currently, the wastewater goes through the base, the post-oration basin. You add air, oxygen. We actually grow algae in that basin, and then we try to, and then we use UV disinfection. So it takes more energy because we have more algae to disinfect. If you look at the lower photo, so the new UV disinfection units will actually come on an arm, so we can swing them up and down out of the wastewater flow channel. And here is a schematic of the UV post-oration building. On the bottom is the UV disinfection. There are two channels. Both channels are designed that they can handle the maximum design flow. So we do have some belt and suspenders. After the UV disinfection, it will go through the V-not, excuse me, it will go through the weirs. We'll then travel towards the top of the screen into our duplex post-oration tanks. We will add the air, the oxygen there, and it will go out, and then it will tie into our existing outfall pipe. Here are some photographs of the UV post-oration construction. So we are looking southwest in both photographs, and the portion closest to us is the UV, and the portion further away is the post-oration tanks. Some other aspects of the Phase 1 upgrades, multipoint chemical addition. So in both the primary and the secondary settling tanks, we will be using a chemical to reduce the total phosphorus delivered to the tertiary phosphorus treatment system to 0.5 to 0.7. And then our current gravity thickener does need some rehabilitation. It has a worn-out mechanism, and we will be generating additional solids through our tertiary phosphorus treatment process. And here is a drone photograph of our current gravity thickener. You can see the Y there is bridges, so that is where employees actually go up to check on it. And on the left is a diagram of a gravity thickener, and the right are two pictures of our gravity thickener with the worn-out mechanism. We are also including instrumentation, so the tertiary phosphorus treatment system will utilize SCADA supervisory control and data acquisition. And this will basically, based on the incoming influent flow rates, we will adjust the chemical and the polymer and the sand feed rates. And it will become the backbone of future SCADA improvements. And we are also increasing our electrical load. So we're adding a secondary pump station as well as tertiary phosphorus building, a new UV disinfection and post-oration. That will all take additional energy. And so we're adding some electrical capacity as well as a new larger generator in an outdoor enclosure. And the current generator will be put on the surplus list, and the expectation is the Board of Education will claim that for one of the high schools. And so very few people get to be inside a wastewater treatment plant. I don't know if every, if it's on everyone's vacation plans this year, but to the left, we do have our motor control center. And what most people don't realize is that what they see on the ground is really the upper level of the wastewater treatment plant. is really the upper level of the wastewater treatment plant. We do have many tunnels or we call them galleys. And so through that, we run a lot of the electrical, the instrumentation as well as piping. And so two different viewpoints of our galleries. And on the right is a series of pumps. So I did briefly mention this, but one of the design aspects and the flexibility we did build in is originally the existing UV disinfection and post-aeration basins were going to be demolished and just turned in back into grass. Through some analysis by our own sewer division staff, the structures are to remain in place. So during the non-phosphorus season, November one to March thirty first, we will still use the post-aeration basin and the existing UV disinfection will just be mothballed. So again, this avoids pumping the water through the secondary pump station as well as through the tertiary phosphorus and the UV when they are both have no need to be used at that time. So just circling back, this is a repeat of an earlier slide. All the red is where we currently have upgrades going on, including the green, which is the existing UV disinfection and post-aeration. I also wanted to include some information on what will be the first three projects in phase two for the upgrades. And this comes out of the facilities plan. And the reason we are including them is because they will impact the budget. So the fine screens at the headworks will be replaced, will be replaced with screens that actually have a more narrower spacing or gap between them. This is particularly important during the phosphorus treatment season when we are not using the primary settling tanks and we're relying solely on the anaerobic basin. So design will be initiated in the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty-one. The estimate is zero point two five zero million dollars. And we have budgeted to pay for that in cash. And then construction is planned to begin in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. The estimate is two point six four million and we project that will be bonded. Second project is solids handling. And so during the facilities plan, we did an analysis. Is it better to move away from anaerobic digestion, which as currently practiced is not cost-effective? Or to renovate our solids handling complex without anaerobic digestion? So if we were to renovate our current solids complex with anaerobic digestion, the cost was estimated to be fifteen point six million dollars. If we move away from anaerobic digestion, the cost is eight point two million dollars projected. So storage for sludge is needed. And we will reuse two of the digester tanks for storage and provide new covers. And we also, one of the big operational parameters that tends to give us headaches right now is our nineteen eighty-eight vintage dewatering facilities. We intend to replace these with two screw presses. And so picture on the right is a screw press. For the dewatering presses, we plan to initiate design in fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three, zero point four one four million dollars, paid for in cash. And the construction and installation of the two dewatering screw presses is estimated to be three point nine zero one million dollars. That will be bonded. And then the digester conversion, the design will begin in fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four, zero point seven four million for the fee. That will be bonded. And then the construction is five point four four million, beginning in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And within our rate budget, we bonded that amount. And then again, we circle back to electrical. The electrical and the motor control centers are circa nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-nine. With the new facilities, we are just using more power and they require an upgrade. So that is two point seven four million. And that is included in the, our, the sewer division's five-year CIP budget in year fiscal, in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And just to give you some highlights as to what is affected, on the left is our digester complex. In the middle circle is our motor control center, our electrical building. And then you can see to the right is the headworks, which, which is where the fine screens will go. So let's talk about the Water Pollution Control Facility Upgrades Clean Water Fund Budget. So our total project costs, including contingency and interest during construction, is fifty-eight million, two hundred fifty-seven thousand, seven hundred forty dollars. The local share or the portion that Wallingford is responsible for or has paid cash for is two point four five eight million dollars. I will point out that we did pay cash or we paid our own money for the design that is grant-eligible. Legal costs and administrative costs, which are rolled into that two point four five eight million dollars, are not grant-eligible. So IFO stands for interim funding obligation. So our eligible project costs per the state is fifty-five million, seven hundred ninety-nine thousand, five hundred six dollars. We have a grant percentage of thirty-seven point eight one zero two. So our project grant is twenty-one million, two hundred seventeen thousand, seven hundred thirty-seven dollars. And our project loan is thirty-four million, five hundred eighty-one thousand, seven hundred sixty-nine dollars. And the terms of that loan, it's a simple interest loan, two percent over twenty years. So currently, right now, in order to pay the contractor as well as our engineering firm, each month, we receive a transfer from DEEP. Pays for both the project grant and the project loan. So basically, right now, we are getting a construction loan. After the project ends in around September of twenty twenty-two, we convert that construction loan basically to a mortgage. Again, that is simple interest, two percent for twenty years. Okay, so that was the background as to what the upgrades project are. Now we will start into our cost of service study approach and how we develop the rates. So we look at what our revenue requirements are. We look at our annual operation and maintenance budget, our existing debt service, what is in our capital improvement plans and what is our future debt service? What revenue do we need to raise? And we look at the sewer demand, which is really how much wastewater people use and what we are going to charge for. And we look at our customer and USHID's demand forecast. We have approximately thirteen thousand, five hundred accounts. Eighty-five percent of the town of Wallingford is on the sanitary sewer collection and treatment system. The other fifteen percent are, have septic tanks. Then we look at how we do that. What is our forecasted revenue versus our revenue requirements? And based on that, we need to look at, we develop what our revenue increases need to be. And then we develop our rates. This slide is basically what I just told you. So we'll skip over that quickly. And just to give the Public Utilities Commission as well as the public, we've used this chart every year during our budget process. But we look at the historical water billable consumption and you can see it trending downward. Fiscal year nineteen twenty is highlighted in a light blue because we do not have the final numbers yet. Correspondingly, our sewer usage is declining as well. So if you have a water meter and you use one gallon of water, we charge you for zero point seven five gallons on for wastewater. So again, you can see decline in both water consumption as well as wastewater billable usage. Just to give you perspective, we have two slides of the historical sewer division rates. The second column is the usage rate or the dollars per CCF that we charge for sewer service. CCF standing for one hundred cubic feet with C being Latin for one hundred. So the last time this sewer division increased the usage rate was June one, two thousand thirteen. So it's been seven plus years. Two columns over, the fourth column is the basic service fee. And we look at the five-eighths inch meter. The last time we changed the rate for the base, basic service fee was June one, two thousand twelve, so eight years ago. And again, we just wanted to provide some historical perspective to the overall rate-making process. Number of sewer customers. Two things I want to highlight on this slide. Majority of our customers, ninety-five point seven percent of them, have a five-eighth inch meter. That includes nine hundred and four customers are what we refer to as sewer flats or flat sewers. So these are, it has to be a residential customer and it can, it can only, they have to basically be equivalent to a five-eighth inch meter customer. These are people, these are residences that have their own well on their property, but then discharge their wastewater to the collection system. So we call them sewer flats. So if you add up the five-eighths, the three-quarter and the one-inch meter customers, they count for ninety-eight point one percent of all sewer customers. Majority of our customers, ninety-five, nearly ninety-six percent are five-eighths inch meter. Ninety-eight percent are within five-eighths, three-quarter and one. And then on the left, you can see how they are broken down into single-family residential, multifamily residential, commercial, industrial or institutional. And the largest sewer customer we have is four inch. So if you look at the one and a half inch, two inch, three inch and four inch meters, they count for one point nine two, slightly less than two percent of all sewer customers. This just gives you some perspective as to who our customers are in the system. Let's, so we just went through the budget process. So let's look at the sewer division's current budget commitment. We do have the upgrades project, active construction, fifty-five point eight million dollars, interim funding obligation with the state. We do have some items on our five-year capital improvement plan. The I ninety-one pump station, force main, and then the gravity sewer along Durham Road will be replaced. We continue with our collection system lining, including both sewer pipes as well as manhole lining. And that is part of our inflow and infiltration program. North and south turnpike sanitary sewer upgrades. Two separate projects right by each other. Hydraulically, they do not, they're not the most efficient right now. We need vehicles, we need trucks. We generally purchase two a year. And then the first three projects in the phase two, fine screens, the solids handling, which we broke into two separate projects, the dewatering presses and the digester conversion, and then the electrical upgrades. And we also have annual operating expenses, wages and salaries, overhead including benefits, materials, parts and equipment, utilities, electric. We are one, probably one of the largest electric users in town. There are a couple greater than us, but the wastewater treatment plant runs twenty-four seven, three sixty-five, along with our twelve pump stations. Nitrogen credit purchases, rotating biological contactor repairs. So we have fifty-six RBCs as well as our inflow and infiltration program. So our proposed rate model. So the red is our operating expenses. And so left to right, we begin with fiscal year twenty, so fiscal year nineteen to twenty. And we end at fiscal year twenty-nine. So it is a ten-year rate model. So the red is our operating expenses. The green are our cash-funded projects. Very small, but in the dark blue, almost looks black, is our current debt service and non-operating expenses. Then the yellow is our phosphorus debt service or the debt from our phase one upgrades. And then the purple is our phase two debt service. And so the lower blue line with the dots is revenue at current rates. So even at our current rates in several years, we will not even cover our operating expenses. The revenue at the proposed rates, which we will get into in several slides, is the orange line. So you can see the orange line just meets what our operating expenses and our debt services are. On the right-hand side is our projected end-of-year cash position. And so we'll start with the red dotted line. That is our minimum cash reserve balance that the sewer division is required to have. Similarly, the water division has a minimum cash reserve balance that has been developed for it, as well as the electric division. And then based on the rate model, the green lines are our ending cash reserve balance. And so the difference between the graphics is fiscal year nineteen twenty is the fiscal year we just ended when we developed the rate. The dark green is for the next four years of rates that we will discuss tonight. And then the light green is projected out for five years. And just as a reminder to the Public Utilities Commission as well as the people, as Vinnie Servoni would say out in TV land, this is a rate model. So when we went through our rate model process, we purchased a program and Bill Phelan uses it extensively. And so we can adjust this based on what happens with our water sales vis-à-vis our sewer usage, what happens with our other capital projects and our operating expenses. So, but we are looking at a four-year rate this evening. So we put it into the proposed rate model. Here are two screenshots. So I will decode this in a moment for you. So let's start with the two components of your sewer division bill. So your sewer division bill is made up, everyone pays a basic service fee. That's a BASF. And that is basically what it, what are our overhead expenses before we even treat one gallon of water? And then we have a usage charge. That is the cost per CCF or the cost per one hundred cubic feet. And when we were working with the rate model consultant, one of the items that came out of the rate model study was our current basic service fee. The factor is based on how much we pay for the meter. Current American Water Works Association is, recommendation is based on the flow factor. So AWWA is American Water Works Association. So if we use our five-eighths inch meter as a base unit one, and then if we look at a two-inch meter, a five-eighths inch meter can support twenty gallons per minute per AWWA. A two-inch meter can support one hundred sixty gallons per minute. So therefore, it has eight times the capacity. But currently, we are only charging five point three five times that if we use the five-eighths inch meter BASF as our base. if we use the five eighth inch meter BSF as our base. And again, 95.7% of our customers have a five eighth inch meter. So we want to provide a graphical representation as to what the different size meters are. So five eighths is in the top left, one inch. If you have a two or three inch meter in your, quite frankly, you wouldn't have these in a home. You would have them in a commercial property, an institutional property. Two inch meter at 160 gallons per minute, that's a large flow rate. That's a serious meter. So the two and the three inch meters take two, if not three, people to put in. So when we look at that, on the top is our current basic service fee. Again, the last time it was adjusted was June 1, 2012. And then we have our proposed basic service fees for fiscal year 21 through fiscal year 24. And I will point out fiscal year 21, it will be effective October 1, 2020. The subsequent years will be effective July 1, 2021. So we focus on the basic service fee for the five eighth inch meter. It does increase each of the years. But if you look at the larger meters, the increase is faster. Particularly there's a jump between the current basic service fee and the proposed basic service fee. And that is the readjustment towards those AWA flow factors. And then the usage charge. We currently charge $5.25 per 100 cubic feet. The proposed rates are listed below. And so beginning October 1, 2020, they would go to 5.72 and we would see 6.24, 7.02 and 8.07. So if I was a resident, the question I would have is, what is this going to do to my rates? So we have prepared some spreadsheets and we have captured them here. So again, we will focus in on our, we will focus in on the five eighth inch customers, including our residential customers, our sewer flats, our multifamily and our commercial. And this is the median quarterly increase. So for water and sewer, we build quarterly. So beginning October 1, 2020, the Public Utilities Commission adopts the rates. The median quarterly increase for a single family residential home with a five eighth inch meter will be $4.76 per quarter. We will get into the sewer flats in a few more slides, but you can see the decrease there of $18.34. We will touch base on that. So multifamily residential, the median increase would be $7.41. Multifamily, additional bathrooms, additional kitchens, more water use. This is a little tough to see, but for those commercial, industrial and institutional customers, you can see the median quarterly increase projected for fiscal year 21. And then at the bottom of each category, we did provide a weighted average based on the median water use, which relates to the median sewer usage for each. I will point out, because Bill Phelan usually chimes in at this point, the one four inch meter customer, all the way on the right, is the Wallingford Water Division. So sewer flat customers, 904 customers, 7.1% of all sewer customers can only be a single family residential dwelling. So they are currently charged the basic service fee plus 1,650 cubic feet of usage. And so that is based on the typical usage. The last time we looked at this was 2,200 cubic feet per quarter. We multiply it by 75%, so we get 1,650 cubic feet. Mr. Phelan and I did an exhaustive statistical analysis. We looked at this about four or five different ways. The average water use for a five eighth inch residential customer with at least four quarters of billable data is now 1,600 cubic feet. We multiply that by 75%, we get 1,200 cubic feet. So that decrease in the proposed rate for the flat sewer customers is a, is a result of us recognizing and applying the reduction in water usage. You want it to be fair and equitable across the board. So when we look at our sewer flat future rates, currently, last time it was adjusted, June 1, 2013, The future quarterly charge will be 91.98 and they will not get back to the current rate until approximately July 1, 2022. And again, that is the recognition people are using less water. We have no way to measure them because they're on a private well. So the focus was the sewer rates, the basic service fee, as well as the usage per 100 cubic feet. But we also did want to take a look at some of our miscellaneous charges within the water division as well as the sewer division. So we looked at our water meter installation fee. And this is for damaged, missing or frozen water meters. Currently, if we replace a frozen water meter, we lose money on it just for the cost of the unit itself. So this was to bring this to current costs as well as labor rates and overhead rates. We also adjusted the cost for a water service installation. So again, labor rates, overhead rates and materials. One thing we did have a big discussion about is the water division no longer wants to be in the excavation and the backfill arena for water services. So the contractor, the property owner will coordinate with a contractor to excavate. We will come, the water division will tap the water main, run the copper service, put in the meter box and then run it and then stop at the meter box. Then the contractor will be responsible for backfill as well as road restoration. That is a business that is just not our, it is not our core. We can do it. It's just not one of our core functions and we decided to get out of the business. Tampering with a water meter charge. This doesn't happen often, but it does happen. So we wanted to put a fee with that. And we did want to establish a protocol and a cost for removing and resetting a water meter or turning a water service off and on more than one calendar year. And this was driven by, for lack of a better phrase, a lot of snowbirds call us. They're going to go away for the winter. Can we come shut their water off? And then in the spring, can we come turn it back on? We currently don't charge for that service, but we looked at and said, we're providing a service for a specific customer that all rate payers are paying for. Again, is that fair and equitable? What we decided is we will give you one off and on a year. We think that's fair. But if there's multiple off and ons per year, we are going to charge you for your time. This happens a lot for residential or industrial properties that are currently for sale. They don't want to leave the water on. So every single time they have a showing, we are called. You have to leave another job, go out there, turn the water on, wait for the showing, and then the next day or that same day, go back and turn it off. Again, there's no consequence for turning water off and on once per year due to lack of payment. If something happens and your water gets turned off because of a lack of payment, we don't want to penalize you twice for the same action. Update our construction permit fees. We currently charge $20 for our permit fees for either an installation of water service or an installation of main, water mains or fire line services. We did an analysis as to how much time it takes our engineering staff and our business staff to process this. We will not capture all our costs at $75 and $300, but we think it is more fair and equitable to what our actual costs are. Sewer miscellaneous charges. We are upping our septic receiving fee and then also our construction permit fees. Then on the business office side of it, $35 per transaction for checks returned for insufficient funds. Check gets returned behind the scenes. It does take our staff time and effort and overhead to do that. You do sell your house, conducting a final meter read and inspection. Again, it's a service that is directly related to one customer. And then just as a reminder, payments are due the last calendar day of the month. And we will point this out that if the, if the last calendar day of the month falls on a weekend or holiday, we roll that forward to the next business day. Again, much thanks to Bill Phelan and Larry Regan from our business office, Jay Palowski from the water division, Eric Krueger. I really have to give a shout out to my secretary, Pat Crabtree, who has really helped me through all the public hearing notices and all the notices in the paper. And then I did also want to recognize the main players at AECOM. Dennis Setzko is the project manager. JR Richard is our inspector that is out there every day making sure that the contractor builds it per the design. And then Ken Bradstreet is the main designer. So, and then we'll talk about the next steps. So here we are tonight with our public hearing. Tuesday night, the PUC should approve, modify or disapprove the charges. If they do approve them, then we would publish the rates in the Record Journal on Monday, July 21st, excuse me, Monday, July 27th. And then the rates would be, become effective for bills rendered on or after October 1, 2020, following the 21-day appeal period. And again, just for the public out in TV land, if you do want a copy of the presentation or have any questions, feel free to give us a call at the Water and Sewer Division's office and we will happy to PDF this out to you. With that, I'll open it up to any discussion or questions. Thank you for your time.
Okay, are there any questions from the public?
I guess I'm here representing the public. Bill Dickinson, 112 Grebe Road. Well presented and I salute everyone involved for, for dealing with a difficult, complicated project as well as the cost associated with it. But I feel compelled to speak to the basics of this. As I have, having reviewed what the rates are, I believe the residential rates come in somewhere close to 20%, if not slightly over, over the next four years increase. And for commercial, industrial, it's close to 30% increase over the next four years. In the business climate we have now, this is extremely troublesome. And that's no one in this room's fault. But if, if we are not in a depression right now, we're as close to it as you can get and avoid using the word. 600,000 people unemployed in the state of Connecticut with certainly no prospect of a quick recovery. So we face a mandate which requires a phosphorus project, which certainly lacks the kind of funding available from state, federal sources. In the 1990s, 80 to 90% of sewer improvement was handled by state and federal money. We're basically being asked to fund most of this. The project grew from a $20 million phosphorus project to now it's $58 million over the past five or six years. That's no one's fault. It's just fact. We were promised 50% funding. We obviously are not receiving even 50% funding for this project. So then we must ask, well, what is the purpose then? Is there a serious, there must be a serious public safety or public health issue that, that drives this in order to require this kind of outlay of money, given, as you saw on the graphs, a steady decline in the billable sewage use as well as water use over the past, how many years? 10, 15 years? How many years did that cover the graph? 20 years, a steady decline. So there's less revenue consistently coming in. And now we take on a huge project. So there must be something major that drives this. And that's where I find a failure. This is not for public health or safety. This is for a very nice, very good environmental cause, taking a nutrient out of the water, phosphorus. I can't say that's wrong, other than to say, in this business climate, in this, in this time period where fewer people are using the service, which means those who do use it, there's costs are steadily going up. And now is the time, we have a almost $60 million project that has nothing to do with public's health and safety. It's, it's a failure of government to be responsive to the citizens who depend upon government for good decision-making. At the very least, in the last year or so, this should have been suspended until such time as at the state and federal level, there was more money to support it. But those efforts aren't made. We're saddled with the problem. I just think people should be aware of the impact of this, which is financially, financially, given what's going on in the economy and everything, it is not just disruptive, it is very destructive. But I thank all of you for your work and we'll move on.
Okay, are there any, any other comments or questions from, from, from the public? Hearing none. I will then declare that the public hearing is over. And I will ask for a motion then to adjourn. Is there a motion to do so? Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, we stand adjourned at 19:43. Thank you, one and all.